Approve the minutes of the October fourteenth meeting.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee DeCostela, to approve the minutes of the October fourteenth Riverside Township Board of Trustees meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Okay, under new business, we have community partnerships and we welcome representatives here of those organizations. The first one on the agenda is the Prairie Trail Federation. If you would please introduce yourself and then give us a brief synopsis.
Good evening, my name is Joe DeVorec. I'm with Prairie Trail Federation, which is the overarching name of the Guides and Princesses program here in Riverside. And the point of the Princess and Guides programs are it's a father-son or father-daughter organization intent on building relationships with a child and their father. In the past, you guys have supported us. A little bit about what we do is we go on campout, we have meetings at least once a month, usually several times a month, either at the scout cabin or other places around town. And in the past, with your support, we've been able to support some father-daughter or father-sons that would not be able to go on a campout because of financial restraints, or we do have dues that help us pay for our programming throughout the year. And we use those finances to help support those families. In the last, or for the last year, we've experienced from last year to this year, a twenty-seven percent growth between the Princess and Guides program. So we've seen incredible growth. This fall, we've had sixty-five father-sons go on the fall campout and seventy-five dads and daughters go on the fall campout. So we're seeing incredible growth in this program and the need that it's important to build these bonds between a father and their child. And this creates those moments for those fathers, sons, and fathers and daughters. So like I said, with your help in the past, we've used that to, you know, there are times where people just fall on some hard times, or as you know, or as we all know, that it's expensive in today's world and everything costs more and sometimes things get cut. And we always say that a barrier to our organization should never be cost. And with your support, we've been able to really enforce that. And so that's a little bit about our program. And what we've used your money in the past for is the programming and to help others be a part of the organization.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Supervisor?
Yes.
How many families from Riverside Township will this money help?
There, so last year, we had three for the father and sons and then two for the father-daughters, and that helps with their dues and the campouts. And the campouts, it's, we do our campouts at YMCA campgrounds and it runs approximately a hundred and eighty dollars for a father and one child to go per weekend. And we do three campouts a year.
Other questions?
I just have one quick question, please. You said you were going to be graduating out, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, congratulations and thank you for your service. Is there a successor or?
There, yes, there's successors and unfortunately, we didn't time it well. Usually, we do one off of, for the Princess program and the Guides program, but both myself and the Princess program, or myself and the Guides program and Kevin and the Princess program were both.
The same time, same schedule.
Same time, it's just how it worked. So yeah, we have successors in place that are watching us for, we, as soon as you get named as the head of the organization, we put an assistant. So we've had an assistant for the last two years and then they will go up and they'll be hopefully in that role for two more years.
Thank you again for your service.
Yeah.
This organization.
I appreciate it.
And how much are dues?
It's a hundred and fifty dollars per.
Child?
So it gets expensive, especially if you have a son and a daughter, it's three hundred dollars.
Okay, so it's for each child then?
For each child, correct.
Is there a pro rate? Or is it's one fifty per child, so if you have multiple children, is it prorated?
The Princess program just does a straight one fifty per family. For the Guides, we charge ten dollars more for each child.
Additional child.
Yeah.
So it's per program?
Yeah, we try to, again, we try to keep things as reasonable as possible. And we do a good job to the point where we get to June and when that, you know, account gets down to, you know, a hundred dollars, I feel like we've done a good job as far as managing finances and we budget every year with all of the activities. And for the most part, we were spot on with sometimes some costs fall back on me, but that's all right, you know?
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Then do I, what is your pleasure?
I move we give two thousand dollars to the Prairie Trail Federation.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee, okay.
I did it, Navarro.
Navarro, thank you, I got the Kelly. Navarro, and seconded by trustee Highlandbach. It's not in the station area, come January it will be. Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Motion is to grant or to partner with the Prairie Trail Federation for two thousand dollars.
Thank you.
No other discussion? Then please call the roll.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was Highlandbach's second. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Riverside Theater Guild.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Sheehan and I run the Riverside Junior Theater Camp out of my backyard every summer. It's been almost twenty years that I've been doing this and I actually am starting to get the children of my first group of students are coming in. So it really is like this generational thing that's going on. If I can stay on my feet and alive, you know, I don't know, you know, how long it could go. But anyway, it's a wonderful program. You know, when he talks about people don't have all the money in the world, it's true that I charged three hundred dollars for these kids to come for seven weeks and eventually put on a show. I look at like Oak Park or these other theater programs just to see what, they're charging eight hundred dollars and they go for two weeks, you know? You know, we've got seven weeks. And honestly, if you've got three kids, you can't pay nine hundred dollars, you know, that's too much. So I like to give scholarships, I like to give deals. And I have just the greatest employees. I got Patty Gill that was the music teacher for years at Hauser, she's my music teacher. I've got a woman who's a Catholic school principal during the year, you know, so I gotta pay them real money. And anyway, you guys make that possible. And the one thing I just want to say in favor of my program, it bothers me so much that kids these days are so into themselves and studying the screens and not engaging with others. And if you could come to my backyard in the summer and look at these kids and they're playing and they're friends and they form lifelong friendships, it really is a great thing. So anyway, I hope that you will continue to support my program.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Are you a registered five oh one C three corporation?
Yes and no. There's me with my theater camp. And then for the last thirty years, we've had a children's theater where we put on a show every winter. That is a non-for-profit organization and it's like I'm sort of part of it, but now they're building, they just bought a theater in Brookfield and it's become this other thing that I don't really want to be involved in. So I'm kind of circling my wagons and saying, I think I just want to be my theater group, I mean, my little theater camp.
But this.
And I personally know I'm not a non-for-profit.
For this theater camp in your backyard?
Right.
For a not-for-profit?
We used to have it as a township program on my right supervisor.
We had it as a township program, we had some questions.
When I first came, when it was.
It used to be.
At that time, he actually, he had money set aside, he needed a youth program, he needed an arts program, and this covered both. And that's how I ever got on with it, but, and it's just sort of been going on.
And you've been doing this for almost twenty years?
Yeah, yeah.
And the township has supported you for that time?
Yes, they have.
How do you get the rest of the money?
I, you, and then, like I said, the kids are paying, the ones who pay, because not every kid pays, but I will get a certain amount in tuition. And I do not take any money myself. I just, when it's all over, when the dust is settled, I divide it up among the counselors and go, that's how much money you made, that's how much money you made. And the books are closed and we start over.
Thank you.
And there have been years, Jeannie, that you have kicked out your own money to pay some of these people.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, sometimes that happens, but it's been, it's been good lately. The other thing I wanted to, yeah, I forgot, last year, you said, you know, we got to reach out more to the community and you were advertising through here. I did last summer get three kids who had just moved here. And I'm thinking they found out about it from you and it was the perfect way for them to come to a new neighborhood and make friends before they got to the, to the school. So, you know, that worked out.
The other thing is, is that you had a problem with ticket sales where it wasn't opened up to the township, am I right on that?
Well, actually, it's free and anybody can go.
Yeah.
And by the way, I started noticing this year, I spread the word around to the audience and the radio players, because I know they like free show. And I said, you know, there's this free show, you know, you can come to this. And so I had a couple of older people that loved it, you know, they, they really thought these kids were great. So I will probably try to do more to maybe get out to like the Golden, I don't know what your organizations are, to say, yeah, come and see this.
Right. When we get the information, we share it over on our website, on Facebook if we have something, or on the newsletter.
This question is for your supervisor. No issues this past season with the programming and all that?
We had a well-behaved group.
We're trying.
Yes.
Still have Danny, his may sound gay.
What is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the grant for four thousand for the Riverside Township Junior Theater Camp.
I have a motion to award the four thousand dollars requested, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee DeCostela, to partner with the Riverside Township Junior Theater Camp in its, in its summer program. Any discussion? Hearing none, then would you please call the roll?
Thank you so very much.
Trustee Clark.
Oh, yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried.
I gotta go see my grandson in Death on the Nile, he's the Hercule Poirot or whatever.
All right, thank you. Thanks for doing it.
All right. Next up is the North Riverside Parks and Recreation.
Hello, my name is Jean Marie Hadra O'Connor, I'm the director of the North Riverside Parks and Recreation. I've been at for a couple of months, but I've been there for about two and a half years. And today, tonight, we come to you and first want to thank you for previous help you have given on our program, Winterfest. Our Winterfest is Wednesday, December third, and this is a completely free event. We open it to everybody, our village as well as surrounding areas. And we have things like the sleigh ride, we have Santa coming for the Christmas lights, we turn on the lights for the Christmas tree, six thirty PM. And we have an indoor, we have indoor activities and outdoor activities. Again, everything is free, we have some refreshments, we do the hot chocolate, we do smores, we have the fire and police there doing some activities. We do have an iceless rink, skating rink that everybody enjoys. And one of the things we're asking this money for would be for, it's a train that goes around our park and it's a nice thing for kids. We decorate the park, the train goes underneath, some lights and everything, and kids really like it. It is for the whole family, but kids specifically like it. And it would go a long ways. We put in, this is one of our largest fests, outside of Fourth of July, Autumn Fest, and then Winterfest is our largest fest.
Is this the first time you've done Winterfest?
No, we've had it for years.
Is Clowning Around Entertainment?
That's the one, Clowning Around Entertainment, Brian filled this application out. That's the place that has the train. That kind of gives all the specifics on, on what it is.
And that, that's the cost of the, of the, of the train?
The train, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the third page of the application.
Includes the driver and everything, it's decorated.
Are there other questions? Then what is your pleasure?
I move to give the North Riverside Parks and Rec Department two thousand nineteen dollars for the Winterfest celebration.
To clarify, this would actually go directly to the vendor because it is another taxing body.
To Clowning Around Entertainment.
Okay, very good. I have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee Navarro for, and seconded by trustee Clark, to partner with the North Riverside Parks and Recreation Department to provide the trackless choo-choo train through Clowning Around Entertainment for December third, their Winterfest. Any discussion?
Will there be some, do we get some credit somewhere?
Oh, I was just, I was, I was just about to say that. We will definitely put you out as a sponsor for this. I can also, our fun guide is coming out and I do put, in the last year, we started putting about a third page, I've gotten something from supervisor Wilt on a description of Riverside Township.
Perfect, very good, thank you.
Goes out to all our residents.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then would you please call the roll?
Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, and the next item is Beds Plus.
Hello, everybody, it's very good to be back, thank you for having me. I'm Cherry Rivera, I'm the director of philanthropy at Beds. And I just wanted to share a little update about what we've been up to and how you have been helping us do our work. I did share our most recent newsletter with you that has our facts and figures from FY25. And our numbers grew tremendously, we served almost six thousand people in need of housing and basic needs in our community. And we anticipate that number to grow even more in this next year. We saw about a hundred and thirty-five Riverside residents and we're projecting that to grow to about a hundred and forty-five or a hundred and fifty. One of the main reasons why people are experiencing homelessness is due to the lack of affordable housing. So if you are making minimum wage, which in Cook County is fifteen dollars an hour, which is actually really high, because even in counties right next to ours, it's more like eight or nine dollars an hour. And you're lucky enough to work forty hours a week at four weeks out of the month, you're bringing home pre-tax twenty-four hundred dollars. And the market rate rent for a two-bedroom apartment in Chicagoland and every other major city across the country is, guess what, twenty-four hundred dollars. So it's not sustainable. And we know that it's a really high barrier for folks to gain and maintain housing. A lot of landlords want a first month rent, security deposit, and a really good credit score. So it's really tough. So funds from Riverside Township help us with one of our programs that helps prevent homelessness. So it's our eviction prevention program. So we get a lot of calls at our twenty-four hour hotline of folks saying, I'm about to be evicted, I'm behind on my rent or behind on my utilities. And we're fortunate enough that we can say, come on into Beds and we're hopefully going to be able to help you. So people come to our walk-in center at Summit and they fill out, they work with an intake coordinator and get connected with case management and can apply for rental assistance. So our average investment for a family to stay housed through that program is about thirty-two hundred dollars. It's a one-time rental assistance that gets paid directly to either the utility or the landlord. And that prevents them from being evicted, which is a really expensive proposition. People, you know, there's a civil tax to the community, they might interact with police, they might end up back in the emergency room, they're losing all their furniture and all their clothing, kids are taken out of school, maybe they're not able to get to their job anymore if they're not at that location. So it's a really good investment of funds to keep people housed in the community where they chose to be. So the funds that you help provide us in part goes to that program. And then another big part of it, we anticipate, I think this last year, we had, we served a hundred and three Riverside residences in our emergency shelter. So we previously, we were doing the overnight rotating shelter in the churches out here in the western suburbs. COVID happened and we actually moved to a motel-based model and we purchased a motel in March and that is the future of shelter. And we've seen a lot of success there, but we did serve about a hundred Riverside residents there as well. They get connected with case management and then they're working on their pathway to housing forward. So we're very thankful for the funds and hope that we can partner again this year.
How much are you asking for? Am I missing?
Five thousand.
Five thousand dollars.
Second page, I believe.
For the, first of all, thank you for everything you do, this program is incredible and long, you know, long history. When you do rental assistant, assistance, I just have a, do you use mediators to try to, you know, get the landlords to forgive some?
We, we just work directly with them. So if it's particularly a landlord that we already work with through Beds, we have great relationships with them. So we just contact them directly. Yeah.
Okay.
So we don't bring in outside mediators, but our case managers are specialists. We have rental assistance specialists that can make some phone calls and see, hey, we're involved now, this person, it has to be a one-time hardship, right? So it's not ongoing and they have to prove that they're going to be able to sustain that rent after the assistance comes. So there's a conversation, of course, with the client and then also with the landlord or if it's utilities involved.
Got it, thanks.
Thank you.
How, okay, how often do you have to turn somebody away that like has applied?
Yes, so, oh, for rental assistance, we have a great success rate, there is some paperwork involved, but last year, we distributed two point two million dollars in rental assistance in the community with an average turnover around of two weeks, from the day they called or came in to the day that we were able to give funds, it's about a two-week turnaround.
I feel like you've improved that greatly over the last few years.
We have, and that's because we have the walk-in center now. So we have, it started off as the Summit Medical Respite Center over at Sixty-third and Archer. And about two years ago, we have now the main floor is a walk-in center. So it's literally no barrier, you do not need an appointment, you just show up and you will be seen by a real person and go through intake to talk about your situation and what services you qualify for, including shelter or rental assistance. And that's open six days a week from noon to four, and we hope that in 2026, that's, we're going to open seven days a week from twelve to four. And then people also can get their basic needs met. So we always have food available there, that's where our donation closet is, and having a warm place or a cool place in the summer that they can stay during the day while they're waiting.
I have to say that since I work with emergency assistance, that I get a better response from the clients, the potential clients now. They used to say, well, I've tried, I can't get through and they, I can refer more conscientiously now, you know, in good conscience.
Very happy to hear that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? What is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we grant the Beds Plus the grant of five thousand dollars. And thank you for what you do.
I will reword that slightly to say that we will award a partnership agreement.
I agree with you.
Beds Plus.
Full-heartedly.
I second.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee Navarro, to award a partnership of five thousand dollars with Beds Plus for their, for their program this year. Any other questions, any discussion? Hearing none, then would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried, thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda is, there is a budgetary transfer in here from the assessor's office. I don't know if, if Mary Jo is ready to speak to this, it's fairly clear, this, they're asking for a budgetary transfer of appropriations. And we're looking at transferring from the maintenance of equipment, five hundred dollars toward postage and printing because that cost has gone considerably. And that would make the adjustment in appropriations, changing the maintenance equipment line to forty-five hundred and the postage and printing to eight hundred. Yes.
One of the reasons this came up is there was a, a new program from Cook County, the Cook County Homeowner Relief Fund, and we identified about a hundred people, so we did an additional, like a personal mailing to all these people. We depleted our postage, doing that with the increases in postage, and we anticipate a postage increase next year as well. So that's why we're asking for the transfer, so we are not at a negative balance in our postage till the end of the fiscal year.
Very good, thank you for that explanation. Are there any questions? Then may I have a motion to approve this budgetary transfer of appropriations?
I make the motion to approve the transfer of budgetary appropriations.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee DeCostela, to make the budgetary transfer from account twenty-six forty-eight, Maintenance of Equipment, to Postage and Printing, account twenty-seven fifteen, of five hundred dollars. Again, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried, thank you. All right, on to the next item on the agenda, communications.
Just two quick items. Supervisor Wilt, the first is I wanted to note that Riverside Township Lions Club issued us a certificate of appreciation for the township's participation in the candy, in the candy day sale. And the second item I wanted to note was to wish my wife a happy twenty-fifth anniversary, which is tonight.
Oh, my goodness. And we've taken you away.
Yeah, I have no other communication.
I'll bet the communications were a little bit louder than that, then. All right, thank you very much. you very much. Then we have the supervisor's report, which I failed to print out. I did...
I do have it, if you'd like to go through it.
Yes, I would appreciate that. Otherwise, I will pull it up here. Thank you.
Do you want your original notes? Do you want my notes for it?
If you got the original, thank you.
I do.
Thank you. Okay. So much of this month was, was involved with the food pantry. November really kick-started donations when the SNAP benefits were suspended, and more of the community heard of the plight of residents in the community. The Village of Riverside put out an e-blast and sent, set up depository boxes in their various buildings around town and at the library to supplement the town hall donation boxes. The ones in our building are full every morning. Riverside Foods set up a donation box and has matched those donations. That's besides their regular holiday drive that they will have as usual. Hauser Junior High has organized another food drive besides the one they now do in the spring. Ames had a food drive. The neighbors on Black Hawk Road had a food drive. They're delivering their, their bags of goods tomorrow. Radio players are asking for donations for their show this Friday. The exercise classes have brought in food, shell-stable food to their classes. We have received $2,775 in financial donations since the 1st of November, besides somebody donated $200 in Juul gift cards. The large donations in that amount included $500 from the Knights of Columbus, $1,000 from All Day Breakfast LLC, don't know who that, they are. But there were also checks in the hundreds from individuals as well. Many thanks to this generous community. As of today, we've already distributed 51 of the authorized holiday gift cards, and it's only 18th of November. Since the beginning of the year, we have had 46 new clients on the food pantry roster, and 17 of them started this month. There have also been new applicants for general and emergency assistance. I currently have 14 general assistance clients with whom I meet monthly. Many of them are waiting for disability approval. Others are searching for work. I participated in the TAC supervisors quarterly meeting in Oak Park, and participated in the Township Officials of Illinois Conference remotely on the Tuesday of the conference last week. I also logged into the Township Officials of Illinois Zoom discussion of the possible ways townships can help people during the shutdown, and what funds can and should not be used. I think we're all, we are doing all that we can in that regard. The SNAP recipients I deal with have had varying degrees of catching up, but several had already experienced a reduction in what they were getting even before the government shutdown, thanks to the COVID boosts going away. We held the Attorney General's Program on scams and had about 25 participants who all seemed grateful for the information. I attended the North Riverside Neighborhood Services Block Captain's Meeting, where, among other information, our mental health board had a presentation about what they do and the various resources available to the community. The architectural firm that Trustee Clark has connected us with sent out one of their engineers who spent about half-day here measuring and analyzing the situation in our town hall restrooms. I opened the building for several weekend renters. Tax bills are out, but came with the announcement that due to the lateness, the first installment of taxes for the 2025 tax year that will be due in early 2026 will not be due until mid-April, which is outside of our fiscal year. It's beyond our fiscal year. So we are losing three months of interest income we would have had if we had the second installment on time, and we may not get a large part of our next year's taxes within this fiscal year. So be patient when, when you look at what the financials look like. Our big copier in the office is on the fruits and will very likely need to be replaced. We have had it for 14 years, and the part we need is no longer made. So the hand and service person is trying to hunt down the part, but it's been nearly a week with no word. So that will be a large investment, but hopefully we'll have some updates. The new machine would have some updates for efficiency. I'll keep you posted on that. But it's kind of an emergency. We, we have small printers at our desks, but to do any kind of volume of copying or printing doesn't really work. That's all I have formally. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
How, I know we've had a lot of donations to the food pantry.
Mm-hmm.
Do we still need some, or?
We, we can always use them. This is a time of year when we often get a little uptick, or in the next month, we usually get some. We are needing them because we do have more people. Frankly, the reductions, even before the federal shutdown, reductions in people's SNAP benefits were dramatic. Before the shutdown, I had a family, for example, who indicated they were, they were getting, I believe she said $900, because there's like four children in the family. They went down to $150. So, I mean, what can you buy for that? So we, we have only had a few so far. People, you proved last month that if necessary, we can offer a second pickup. So that has happened. In a few instances, people have been extremely grateful for getting the gift card for the holidays. And other than that, I mean, I've had to fill in a couple of things here and there because people bring in random items, but we've had people drop off cases of vegetables and, and things like that. So we, we can always use donations, but it's not, it's not a crisis situation right now. We have some things in the overflow. We are, we are having a very frequent pickup, though. So we are restocking the, the room down here on a very regular basis.
Is there anything in particular the food pantry needs?
We can always use cereal, because that's kind of hard to pack, and people don't tend to bring that in. We always need proteins, proteins and vegetables and fruit. Those, those items are always there. We get a lot of pasta. We don't always get the sauce. So sauces are also very welcome. If you can make them in not glass, if they can be either can or plastic jars, that's preferred, but we'll take them. It's just that it becomes very heavy when we're putting out two totes per person to carry a lot of glass jars, and it can be dangerous. Every now and then, it falls out of my trunk when they open it up.
And you said Riverside Food matches?
What they, what they had, they had a big, you know, one of those huge produce boxes. And the, before they would bring them to us, they would match whatever, and they, they would bring over. We had about three or four drops from them already.
So like, if I bought a can of spaghetti sauce and put it in that box, then that's the can that Riverside Foods would match?
I'm not sure exactly how that is. I know that they're saying that they're matching it, and they're bringing us. We're not checking it. Everything's coming in shopping bags. So we're unpacking it. How they're doing that, I'm not sure. But they got posted right on their donation box that, that they're matching it. So.
Is coffee an item that you need?
Coffee is one of those items that we don't put in every bag, because not everybody's a coffee drinker. However, we've had greatly stocked extra shelves, but that's always made available to people to take as they want. They don't get to shop for a lot of other things, but we do offer them those items like coffee, toiletries, cake mixes, things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, a few people have asked me to inquire about nighttime hours or more convenient hours, and I don't, I know...
For pickup?
Yeah. For pickup, or I don't know the process to sign up for it, for the food pantry?
So generally, we ask people to call an hour in advance so that we can have the bags down here. A lot of people forget to do that, or they may not have access to a phone when they're needing to come in. They're in the neighborhood, so they stop in. It's not a huge deal. It's just that they may have to wait if we've temporarily run out of the bags. But I, we haven't had anyone say, oh, we wish you would be here, you know, longer hours. We are open all the hours for, for clients to come in, all the hours that our office is open. We ask, we kind of cut it off a half hour before we close, so that we're not scrambling at the end. But we haven't had a lot of, we haven't had any inquiries, people saying, oh, can't you, you know, be open during the evening? I'm sure that we could accommodate. We could find a way to do that. If necessary, we would have to designate a particular day to do that. As far as packing the bags, as a matter of fact, we have a Girl Scout troop who's coming in later this week, and that's their project. They are going to earn their, their badge by filling those bags under supervision. So we'll, we'll have some extra backup so that the staff isn't hustling to do that. But, I mean, if you hear of it, if you hear that there's a, a need for us to open other hours, then we'll find, we'll find a night to do it, or Saturday, perhaps.
Great. And how does it, do clients sign up for it, and then they come in twice a month?
So the process, the process is that you come in, present your ID that proves you live within the township.
Okay.
We make a copy of that, put it in a file. We log you into our computer, into our spreadsheet, and run that alphabetically. And then each time, you get a card that says when you're next eligible. We haven't really changed the dates on that. We've just been telling people, if you need something sooner, please try to wait at least two weeks, but you can come again. But we haven't changed the date that 30 days out, just because it would be a little bit hard to manage. But if they call and they say, can I come in, and it's only two weeks now, we will tell them yes. But otherwise, we keep the date of their last visit. We track how many times they've been here during the year. At a time like this, we, we mark if we've given them a gift card. During the summer, we mark which vouchers we have given them, so that we know if people are utilizing them or not for the farmer's market. So that's, that's about it. But, and then each time they come, they do have to present ID to, to show that they're still in the township.
Have you ever had a situation where they don't have IDs, or they're homeless, or?
We have. If it's not an ID, per se, if they can prove with a utility bill, a lease, something like that, we do need something that, that shows that they're, they're in the township.
And Supervisor, you also took part in a RB landmark article?
Oh, well, I was interviewed for it. I didn't even read it yet. It's been a little busy.
It's out digitally.
Is it out digitally? Okay, yes. Hopefully, they, I wasn't misquoted or didn't come across foolish. But yes, they had approached the village, and the village referred them also to me, and they've spoken to, to several other people. So.
Yes, they did.
About, what's it about?
About the food pantry.
About the food pantry.
And the, the extra need and what, what we've been doing. So.
It was a nice article. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? And we can move on. All right. Wow, that was a long supervisor's report. Is there something from the assessor's office?
Hi, Mary Jo Miller. I'm the deputy assessor. Just to reiterate that from your supervisor's report, the tax bills were mailed for Cook County on November 14th, last Friday. Most people did receive them Saturday, today. They are online. We are seeing corrections being made, too, if people did certificates of error. So the due date is December 15th. And if people cannot pay the bill in full, you can make partial payments. There is a payment plan option on the online. But you can still pay a partial with a coupon. And also, for the first installment for next, for next year, it's going to be due April 1st.
Oh, April 1st. Okay.
It's April 1st. So it got pushed, the legislature, they already had it passed. Instead of March 1st, it's going to be April 1st.
Okay. Thank you. I stand corrected, and I'm happy to hear that. That's only one day behind. However, we don't always get...
A little better.
Yeah, a little better. We should have some of that tax money, then. Thank you very much. Any questions for the assessor's office? Thank you. Trustees' reports. Trustee Clark?
Yes, I attended the TOI conference in Springfield, and they had about 700 people there that attended, which is up a little bit. Well, yeah, up some. But it is the first year of the cycle, so that always you have more people in your first year.
New people coming in.
And so that was fun and educational. And I'll be doing some type of, like, Christmas lunch for the seniors. I don't have a date yet, but I will let you know.
Okay.
That, that that's happening. And we had 260 people in October attend the exercise classes.
Would you like to comment at all on the presentation that we had from the Attorney General's Office?
Oh, yes, we had a great presentation from the Attorney General's Office. And I think we had a few more than 25 people.
That was what my rough count was.
It was, yeah. And then we also, one of the officers from the Riverside Police came and spoke. But I think everybody that was there got a lot out of it and was very grateful.
Very good. Thank you. Trustee Navarro?
No report.
No report. Trustee DeCostela?
Thank you, Supervisor. No report.
Okay. And Trustee Heilinbach?
Hi. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Mental Health Board is busy, as always. As Supervisor Wilt mentioned, we did some community engagement at the Riverside, or I'm sorry, the North Riverside Block Captain's Meeting. It was well-received. It was the first time we've done this presentation, and it's a PowerPoint presentation. I ask that Supervisor Wilt, we would like to do that presentation for this board, to show exactly what the Mental Health Board does. So if you could give me a time, and we would like to do it during one of our monthly meetings.
Sounds good.
We're also doing a program, a television program through Riverside TV, and it's called The Kids Aren't Alright. And what has happened is, since the pandemic and the lockdown, there's been a lot of mental illness with our children. So Dr. Tryani, who is our consultant, and several of his colleagues are going to make a presentation, and it'll be on RB TV. All of our other programs that we've had on our, on RB TV are very well-watched. And this one, I think, will be a very good one.
I think you mean Riverside TV, right, rather than RB?
Riverside, yeah. Riverside TV.
Because there is also a RB TV.
Right. So I'm very excited that this, we just talked about it a little bit before I came in with our community engagement meeting. So that concludes my report.
Okay. Do you have a date scheduled, or do you have?
Yes, January 31st.
And you've cleared that with the office?
I did.
Thank you. Very good. Any questions?
I do have a question regarding that. For, just for anybody, with the Riverside TV, is that on YouTube, then? How would, how would, I don't have, I don't have...
Right.
I don't think I have it, though, need to watch.
So in Riverside, it's usually available through their network, but I don't know if they do that one live.
They do have a YouTube channel?
Right. And then they do it on YouTube.
And they do put it out on YouTube. I mean, I know that I've asked for, you know, how many people have watched it, you know, the, the program, I mean, how many people on YouTube, how many people in, in the Riverside area?
Okay.
So it is on, it is on YouTube.
I, I've been remiss. I will share with you, I always get a list of the various programs that are available, and where they can be found. So I will, I will share that with you.
Thank you. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sure. All right. No other reports, so we'll go on to unfinished business. Just general discussion of the township levy. I've looked at it upside down and sideways. There's minor tweaks that I can do, but basically, here's our thing. The max that we can levy is an increase of 2.9%. That is what the, the county says is the cost of living increase. Or we, it's the lower of 5% or that. And so I don't know that we want to go to referendum or want to try to increase over that 2.9%. So I'm going to recommend that we, that we go for that. So I'm going to recommend that we, um, that we go for that, the full two-point-nine percent within the various line items. I may change some things because some areas don't need increases and others certainly do. We, you know, we levy much less than our budget actually calls for, so. That's what I will present for the December meeting, and, um, I think I need to post that before, so as soon as I have those numbers up. Do you know how that, do I, do we need?
Estimate, I think you have to have an estimate announced twenty days before formal final action on the levy.
Okay, then I will, um, I will work on getting that out. Do I need to have a meeting to do that?
I don't believe so. I think.
We can just post it?
Announce it publicly.
Announce that it's available?
Right.
For inspection? Okay.
Right.
Um, and I know that if we stay at that amount, we don't have to have a hearing, but sometimes we do it per forma?
If, if you go above what the estimate is, then yes, I think you do have to.
Right, but not stay at the two-point-nine.
Or explaining that afterwards, correct?
Okay.
But it's not common. I don't think we've done that in the past that I can recall.
Okay. If you can verify that twenty-day, if that's the, uh, because then it would be, um, on our, just, we have to file it by the end of December, so it has to be on our.
Last Tuesday of December, correct.
Right, it has to be on our December agenda, um, which our meeting is on the ninth, so. I will hustle to get that out if we, if we truly have twenty days. I think I don't have a lot left.
I mean, you could do it at a special meeting too if you needed, you know, additional time for whatever reason.
Right, right.
As well, so, um, but as long as you get it in on file by last Tuesday of the month, you're.
Okay, but I can just post it with the agreement of this board that I go for the two-point-nine?
I think that would cover it, yes.
Do I need a motion for that?
Uh, I don't believe you need a motion as, you know, if there's a consensus on that, then I don't think you need a.
So if that's all right with you, and I'll just, uh, do the figures for, you know, just adjust some of those line items. All right. Very good. Then we are down to the approval of warrants.
I'd like to make a motion that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, November twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of six thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy dollars and thirty-four cents, as presented to the board this eighteenth day of November, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. I have a motion by trustee DeCostela for the general warrant. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, seconded by trustee Heilandbach. So I have a motion by trustee DeCostela, seconded by trustee Heilandbach, to approve the general warrant for November twenty-twenty-five in the amount of six thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy dollars and thirty-four cents. Are there any questions? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Heilandbach?
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela?
Yes.
Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Motion is carried.
And I'd like to make a motion that the board ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, November twenty-twenty-five, one thousand, five-hundred-and-forty dollars, sixty cents. Payroll warrant, twenty thousand, nine-hundred-and-eight dollars, twenty-one cents. Health warrant, three thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixteen dollars, nineteen cents. General assistance warrant, thirteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, eighty-nine cents. Township radio players, nine hundred, nineteen dollars, fourteen cents. Food pantry warrant, six hundred, seventy-four dollars, six cents. All of the above as presented to the board this eighteenth day of November, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. I have a motion by trustee DeCostela for the warrants. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee DeCostela, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the following warrants for November of twenty-twenty-five in the following amounts. Utility warrant, one thousand, five-hundred-and-forty dollars and sixty cents. Payroll warrant, twenty thousand, nine-hundred-and-eight dollars, twenty-one cents. Health warrant, three thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixteen dollars, nineteen cents. General assistance warrant, thirteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. Township radio players, nine hundred, nineteen dollars and fourteen cents. And the food pantry warrant, six hundred, seventy-four dollars and six cents. I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela?
Yes.
Trustee Heilandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Motion is carried for the other warrants. And is there any public comment? Would you please identify yourself and?
Hi, my name is Laura Rubio. I live at three-twelve East Grove Road. I am actually here on behalf of the Friends of the Library. Um, you guys waived the fee for the rental of the hall for our Harvest Bingo, and we wanted to just say thank you. It was a great success. We've raised over six thousand dollars from that event for the Friends of the Library. So that will go to support library programs, the, uh, summer reading program, baby books, carpet, anything that the, the library needs. So we just want to say thank you again.
Well, that's very nice of you.
Thank you for coming out. That's really nice of you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none, then I will call this meeting adjourned.
Don't you need a motion?
Yes.
I don't, but I'll take it. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee DeCostela. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried.